We're on, okay, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Atchison County Commissioners. Casey's gone today, so I will be chairing today. So first thing we've, there's no invocations morning, so please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, not seen anyone on the one. Public comment here. Approval of the minutes, have you had a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October twenty ninth.
I will second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes two to zero. Commissioner comments.
I just, all I would say is, thank God the election's over.
Yeah.
And it sounds like everything's kind of wrapping up, so we can move on and take care of business.
Yes, I really don't have anything myself, but I have to agree with that sentiment, it's like, it's over. So, hey, new business. First thing we'll do today is we've been approved to go ahead and do the canvas of the election. In Casey's absence, we've asked our Register of Deeds to fill in as the third canvasser. So. She should be coming in very shortly.
Hello.
A little better.
Sorry, it's a little bit document.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for being able to fill in.
No problem. Hundred and thirty-six total provisional ballots we're gonna look at today. We had the election last Tuesday, November fifth. We have to do a post-election audit, so we didn't know if we were gonna do the canvas. We have been approved on the post-election audit, so I have given you guys all the summary, which I have here, and then the unofficial results. We have went through, Mr. Henderson and I went through the provisionals that we have verifying on a case-by-case basis, whether or not the recommendation should be to count or not count the ballots. The first four that I have are some that Mr. Henderson himself was going to write up. Do you want to go through these first?
That one one?
Yes.
Yeah, I gave.
Okay.
There's a little summary there.
Okay.
Give me to go over it or?
Yes.
We have a statute. We have a statute that, in the Kansas Constitution, that provides that people may not vote while, after they've been convicted of a felony, as long as they're under serving the sentence. And then the statute also provides that their voting rights, now that the suspension of their voting privileges lasts until they've completed court supervision. And I did copy the statute and put it on the cheat sheet there. It's a little more aggressive, or at least I shouldn't say it that way. What the Secretary of State's office is suggesting is a little bit more aggressive, I think, than what's called for under the statute. Because they are saying that a person who's once convicted of a felony and sentenced are kicked off the voting rolls and then have to re-register. And I don't see that in the statutes. The Secretary of State's Office on my website has that, and also the ACLU has promulgated this Restore My Vote activist, Kansas activist manual. And it provides the same thing, after you completed the terms of your sentence, voter registration is not automatic, you have to re-register a vote. So that's what the ACLU is, I'm not typically on the same side with the ACLU on a lot of issues, but, and I guess I'm not on the same side with them on this issue, but I mentioned that just so that you understand that there are reasonable people that don't take the same position that I've taken here. But I'm reading the statute that says, "The ineligibility imposed by this section shall attach upon conviction and shall continue until such person has completed the terms of the authorized sentence." And to me, that suggests that there's a suspension of their right to vote during the time that they're, that they're serving out whatever sentence has been imposed, until they're released from probation. We had a few that were, four I guess there, that were felons. And each of those cases, I don't think we could find compelling evidence on what was readily available to us, that the people were still serving a sentence, that they were still under court supervision for the felony conviction. So my suggestion is to count, if you want to read individually what's written on the ballots.
Yeah. I just put a piece of paper to protect the privacy of the voters, but I do have the, each of the envelopes here.
But my suggestion. To count unless unless the person was not completed the terms of the sentence.
So it doesn't have to be expunged or anything?
It does not have to be.
So do you need any more information?
How does that apply if someone has to register as an offender?
Sex, that's a, that's a very good question. Sex offender registration is not considered to be punishment.
Okay.
There are Eighth Amendment issues with that, and so they're explosive, but courts have consistently and explicitly helped that registration under the Kansas Offender Registration Act is not a punishment. So we could have registered offenders who are.
They can vote.
Who could vote.
Okay, I was just curious though, because.
Yes, and Michelle and I had also talked about, it doesn't seem like the Secretary of State's Office is handling this the same way that they used to. They haven't been maybe quite as consistent. Because it would certainly be helpful if they would tell people at sentencing, their right to vote has been, has been taken from you on account of your conviction, and you need to re-register a vote. I'd be happier if they said that, because I'm not sure that we're giving people any notice of what they need to do to become re-infranchised.
Okay, and I want to be clear as Chair. Do we need to make a motion and vote on each one of these provisions? Or if we agree with that, can we accept this if there's no dissent?
Either way.
I think either way.
Let's try for the later, because in the ease of a lot of motions, seconds and things, so now don't. On any of these, if we, if there's a dissent, we will vote on that one separately. So is that, is that fine?
The answer is to ask, pull it off.
Well, it's, there's already a suggestion here. If it's different, if one, any one of us dissents with the.
The recommendation.
The recommendation, we will vote on that item separately.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Um, I, that is, I'm sorry, this will be added to the minutes, the canvas summary. Probably should go through some of that before I actually, actually start going into the, the provisionals. We did have the election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. We had seven thousand four hundred and sixty-one voters, which is a sixty-two point four-two turnout, sixty-two point four-two percent. We had nineteen precincts, as we have in the past, with ten polling locations. We did have a few more board workers, we had forty-four board workers throughout our polling locations. We had three staff members here, and we had an additional seven people in the office for review boards, which is basically our first canvas. So they basically wrote down the write-ins. So they did the write-in. Out of that, we had five hundred and one advanced ballots that were distributed. Thirty of those were UACVA, which is our overseas civilian and military. The advanced ballots received back were four hundred and fifty-three, so it's a pretty huge amount. Twenty-nine of those being the UACVA overseas military and civilians. We had two thousand four hundred and thirty-one that came in the office to vote. And then our grand total, like I say, is seven thousand four hundred and sixty-one voters throughout provisional. That's including the provisional and all of the mail-out and in-person. So we do have one hundred and thirty-six that are provisional, and I do have them kind of categorized here on our sheet. There are a couple with the move, the voter that's moved, that I have kind of separated out just a little bit, so I have some name changes. So the first one I have is the, the four that I have for the felony. We have found no, nothing in our records that show that they're still felons. And we've spoken to pretty much all of these, so if there's, we'll go ahead and count them unless there's a question.
Yeah, no dissent?
Okay. And I do have five here, we're gonna go down the row pretty much, but I have five of them here that were basically listed as provisional, but they should not have been. After reviewing them, everything is correct. And they voted the correct ballots, so I have five here that basically were, should not have been written as provisional. Go ahead and put those in, they approved. This is, seems to be a popular one, we have five of them here that had a different name. So most of these are females who were married or, and or divorced and took in their name back. So we have five that the name is different than what's in the actual poll book.
It's seven on here, it's five.
Yes, there's two more back here that I have. So this is five of the seven.
Oh, I see.
And then I have another one here that is, has a different name, but that name was already registered. So it was a technical error, and there was no reason for this one to be provisional. So that's the sixth one here. And then I have this one here, which was a different name plus a move. They voted the wrong ballot, but this one here, the ballots have identical offices and races on the, both ballots, the ballot that they voted and the ballot that they should have voted, so this would be a full count.
All good?
Yep. Now we are down to the street file is incorrect. And there was a husband and wife that came in. One went through the poll pad just fine, gave them the correct ballot, and the spouse went through, and it was like a different precinct, but it was like real close to an annexation area. So we knew that it was correct with her, so we gave him the correct ballot, and so he voted the correct ballot, but it was wrong in our street files. We have street files that determine what precinct everything is in according to the, even an odds of certain streets. So we will fix the street files on that, and that will be correct after this selection. I have twenty-four here that had a change of address, and they moved within the county. And they voted the correct ballot. So we're trying to get the word out a little bit better, that people need to update their voter registration as soon as they move versus making the election workers do it when they go to the polls. So I have twenty-four here that have moved. Within the county, they voted the correct ballot, so the recommendation is to count that. Since they voted the correct ballot, it will be full count as well. I have five here, six, six here, that requested advanced ballots. The latest we can mail advanced ballots and take the request for them is one week prior to the election, so it'll be the Tuesday prior. So with mail system, you never know, and a lot of these are college students that go to college in a different state. So, and mail system doesn't typically have enough time for them. If they come home on the weekend, we were home on Saturday, some of them voted in person. Some of them were here for the, for the election on Tuesday, so they did that as well. So these voters requested advanced ballot, but they did not receive them. They voted either the polls or early, and we did verify, I verified yesterday as well, that we have not received any of these advanced, we actually had one come back in the mail.
An unvoted.
An unvoted, advanced. It didn't have an apartment number on it, so it came back, kicked it back to us. So, so I have six of them, and we only, this is the only ballot we have on record for these people. So that's recommended to count as full.
That's the only thing I had a question, had been questioned on, it's like if they get an early ballot, but then they go to the polls, you know, what happens? And I says, well, they're all accounted for. They, they know what they sent out, how many were, and so.
We have a, a very good list.
Yeah.
When we got the, the request, when the, when the ballot was mailed out, who it was mailed out to, what address it was mailed out to, what the residential address is, we have quite a spreadsheet that we fill out. So when it comes back, we also go on that spreadsheet, and we, we put the date that we received the ballot. And so we can do a quick count on that, so.
They're putting their address on their application.
Correct, they're putting their mailing address or their resident address, and then if it needs to go somewhere else, they're putting that address on as well.
You got that one back, did you get any other ones back?
No.
Okay, just curious though.
Not adding any of those. I think they were all good, but it was just, they, they were mailed later, and people worry, they don't want to lose their chance. So with their, with their, with both of the ballots not being in, it's, they're good. These ones here, moved within the county, I have, I think thirteen of these. They moved within the county, they did vote the wrong ballot. However, the ballots were identical, and I both worked together to verify that the ballots had the same commission race or no commission race, so these ballots are identical. So these thirteen would be full count. Then I have nine here that moved within the county, they voted the wrong ballot, however, the ballots were different. One has a commission race, and they shouldn't have voted a commission race, or they voted the, you know, like yours versus Casey's or something, so they did not vote the correct ballot, the correct commission race. So I have the nine here, and we have these down as a partial count, we're not gonna count the commission race. So these will be hand-counted, but everything will count except for the commission.
That's the only race that would have been different, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yes, so, and some of them, we have, like, the First Baptist Church, which is North Fifth and South Fifth. We had one that had Commissioner Knoll and one that had Commissioner Quinn. So it depended upon what ballot they actually received, so. I had this one here. They were registered to vote that, that they just went to the wrong precinct. Everything was in their, in their file, the Elvis file, it showed that they were registered. It showed where they voted, but they didn't go there. Which would differ precinct completely, and, and both of these, I guess. So they didn't have, this one here didn't have time to get to the other location. And I don't know what time this one here was. So with them not having time to get to the correct polling locations on election day, that is one of the things that we have our election workers do, go ahead and give them a ballot, go ahead and let them vote, but just do provisional and make notes for us. So, but both of these were registered, they just voted the wrong place. So we, as well, will do these as a partial count and not count commission races. Okay, so I'm gonna get those back a little bit. The rest of these, popping my throat. I did have a registered voter who received an advanced ballot. They did not sign their ballot, I did make attempts to try to reach them, was unable to do so. So this advanced would not count, because we didn't get a signature. But it's only one, and we attempted, so. Yep. I have two here that did not show valid form of ID. They were both told at the polling locations, as well as I tried to reach out. So these will not count, because they did not come in to show ID. They, they hadn't told campus. I was gonna say, you know a lot of these, because you were there for hundreds of years. And this is the big stack that we went through for various reasons, as far as if it was just a move from one within the county, but these were not registered in Atchison County prior to the election. And we talked earlier about the presidential-only election ballot. That is something that must be treated as an advanced ballot. The voters need to come into the office, fill out a form, be it that they recently relocated or that they're a new registrant. And we had nobody do that, because there is the deadlines with the advance that, seven, seven days prior to the election, that had to be started, initiated. So we had nobody that did that, so we do have sixty-two here that were not registered in the County of Atchison. So I have the statutes all listed, so.
Do they register then at the polling place for the next time?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes.
Yes.
So they will be, they will qualify for the next election. But unfortunately, they will get voter credit, but their, their vote will not count this election. So, I have all of these statutes listed on every one of these. If you have any questions, I can definitely answer questions for you in regards to statutes and recommendations there.
Questions?
No, I don't either. Okay.
And you have to keep these for how long?
I have to keep these, since it is a federal election, I have to keep these for twenty-two months. But per recommendations of statute and our Secretary of State, we do, as long as there's no pending litigation, we do dispose of them at twenty-two months. So we have a wonderful maintenance person that, that likes to take them and burn them for us, so. That way, if we don't have the records, we can't go into, go into any litigation, as long as we dispose of them properly.
Do you have anything further to add?
As far as voter credit, I have been having some people that have asked about voter credit. My stance on that is, I like to get the canvas done first, and then we will basically look over everything that has come back from our polling locations, from what we've done in-house, our mail. We will go back in and verify that we have every single person on our list and accounted for before we give voter credit, but that should be done by the end of the week, the first of next week. So.
So with that, with no dissension from the recommended canvas, do I hear a motion to accept? Or not, do I have a motion to accept the manifest as written?
So.
Yep.
It's been moved to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have your direction?
Yes, I will hold off until we can recess into work session or just a recess, so that I can get these upstairs and start getting them count. So I don't want to break up the meeting too much, but Mark is at a training today, and so stuck with me.
Why don't we do the bid opening at ten-thirty here, and then?
Yeah, and then, then I think that we then will do, and this, I think it was just one bid that we know of.
That we know of, yes, I can verify with the office, so.
And is there any further duties for?
Me? I don't think so.
Thank you for participating.
No problem, we'll do, we want these back. Yeah, you can have those, okay.
Yes, and is this currently listed on our website?
That is currently listed on the website now as a news flash, however, the permanent results, the official results will be placed on there this afternoon, after I get them scanned in and signed. So, but they'll be placed in, I probably will do a news flash for about a week, and then they'll be with the results where they normally are after that, so.
And we can be able to not have to pay a big publication fee for putting on the write-ins and publishing that? Can you just, can you set that list available in your office and and maybe just make a small thing in the paper?
As far as write-ins, that is something that's good to kind of go over again. Legislature had passed some with the, with the write-ins, in order for certain write-ins, first-class city or above, so that would be first-class city, which would be a city of Atchison, the county, state, and federal. If you want to be, be able to count a write-in vote for you, you have to file an affidavit of write-in candidacy, has to be in my office for Mondays prior to the election, which this year I think was October fourteenth. So those, with those on, on file, and on, on the sheet that you will see the federal offices, on the president, there was fourteen different couples. There was one write-in affidavit on file for the US House of Representatives, second districts. And then there was one on file for the sheriff, county sheriff. So the other write-ins, though, I have to write in. So I have to make a list, but publication for like the Globe.
Yeah.
We can, we can keep them off.
Yeah, that's what, those are available. Yeah, David, right?
Right, and we would have them, we would have everything in the office as well, and on the website, be the whole. So, okay. Thank you. I'm gonna leave these ones down here, because these are my nose, and then I'll take these ones.
Now to switch hats?
Yeah. That's been a really big thing this last couple meets is switching hats.
Yes. At ten-thirty, we have a bid opening for the Ottawa Road Phase One culverts. And since Joe was indisposed today and couldn't be here for our meeting, Michelle is gonna open the bid or bids for that, and then Joe will be able to look them over and give us a recommendation next week.
Apparently, we've not gotten anything else, I just checked with the office. I did get the engineer's estimated cost from a Daniel Stack of Schwab Eaton that Joe wanted me to kind of go through first. This is on the Ottawa Road roadway Phase One Rehabilitation and Safety Cost Share Program. KDOT Project C dash five three zero nine dash zero one. And the total that we received from them is three hundred and sixty-five dollars, eight hundred and seventy-two. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Three hundred and sixty-five.
Three six five eight seven two.
Eight seven two, okay.
We did receive just the one bid from Leavenworth Excavating and Equipment Company, also known as Lexico, out of Leavenworth. They've, they've attached their bid bond with it as well. Then the addendum that was sent, their total five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one twenty-three and fifty cents. So that's what I have. Since this is the only bid, I'm gonna request for Superintendent Snyder that he's able to review this. He was under the impression that there would be quite a few more that came in, however, this is the only one that we received.
Yes.
So.
I, he was actually there for a brief this morning, he discussed a little bit, and we definitely wanted him to look it over before giving us a recommendation.
Right. Okay, so I will, I will go ahead and take these then and get them copied. Okay, so I will, I will go ahead and take these then and get them copied, scanned and sent to him.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just looking to make sure that we didn't have anything else, um. And, do you have? Uh, any idea of, I mean, what would be a good time to come back in from recess, or just wait until you're ready and then come back in?
Um, with the fact that we have to do some of those as hand counts, it's probably gonna be best to do, to give us at least forty-five minutes.
Oh, yeah, that's, we've, we've gonna, we have very little on the agenda, so. That's fine. We'll just, uh, shall we make a motion to recess until uh, the results of the canvas be- become available? So move. And I will second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes two to zero. And then we'll pop back in and give that, and then we'll maybe, maybe something else will come up that we'll. Can work on, so. We're going into recess, thank you. Hey, we're coming back in session, uh, the clerk has returned with the res- official results of the. A, election, so I'll let her take it away.
We do have copies for everybody, but I would like to get two copies signed, if that's gonna be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we did, um, we ended up counting the seventy-one, um, so. Through the election results in Atchison County, we had Harrison Woltz with twenty-two oh one votes. Kennedy Junior and Shanahan had one hundred, Oliver and Termat had forty-three, Trump and Vance had four thousand nine hundred eleven. We did have a couple write-ins where the affidavits were on file, and those will be sent to um, the Secretary of State. For the US House of Representatives, second districts, we have Nancy Boita with two, two thousand one hundred eighty. John Howard with three hundred forty-three, and Derek Schmidt with four thousand six hundred and forty. Kansas and Senate in the first district, we have Craig Bowser, five thousand seven hundred sixty. Kansas House of Representatives in the sixty-third district, Alan Rivas, five thousand nine hundred ninety. County Commission, second district, Eric Noel, two thousand three hundred thirty-four. County Commission, third district, Casey Quinn, two thousand one hundred ninety-three. County Clerk, Michelle Phillips, six thousand two hundred eighty. County Treasurer, Connie Ellerman, six thousand two hundred forty. Register of Deeds, Blair Burton, six thousand one hundred six. County Attorney, Sherry Becker, six thousand sixty. Sheriff Jack Laurie, four thousand seven hundred forty-one, and we did have the affidavit on file. For Adam Potts for the write-ins, and um, the write-ins were one thousand seven hundred. It was odd that it was even with that. Um, I'm just gonna go through the um, wha- what we have as far as the, the highest vote getters for the um. Township offices for township trustee, we have Ben Hawk with four thou- or four hundred and forty-six. Center Township, we have Colin Shealy, two hundred and ninety-seven. Grasshopper Township, we have Scott Lowe at two hundred and eighty-eight. Ryan Hermre for Lancaster Township at four hundred, Greg Oswald, Capioma Township, one hundred and twenty-one. Dolores Service, Mount Pleasant Township at four hundred twenty-five, and Timothy Bell at Shannon Township, six hundred thirty-one. And then Gary Service, Walnut Township at two oh eight. We did have some write-ins. We did have some write-ins for that, but there was not enough to overcome any of the ones we had on the files. Um, Township Treasurer, for Benton, we had Dwayne Coder at four twenty. Center, we had Adam Nowinski, three oh six. Ryan Swinson was Grasshopper Township at two ninety-six, and then on the. Write-ins, we did have for Capioma Township, Damon Bowen with nine votes. We did not actually have anybody on the ballot for Capioma. And Lancaster Township, Carl Butrin with four hundred thirty-seven, Kathy Swagger with Mount Pleasant Township, four hundred twenty-six. And then we had both William J. Falk and Todd Hankey as the Shannon Township Treasurer. And um, that was, William Falk was two hundred sixty-three, and then Todd Hankey, four forty-eight. And then Janet O'Anour with Walnut Township, two twenty-two. And then we go right into the Court of Appeals, which I'm gonna bypass those, those will be in the um, results on the um. On the website. Um, I do wanna go into the questions, we had a um, a special question for USC three thirty-nine patrons. Um, we had three different areas bitten, bitten to and center township that had patrons that lived in that three thirty-nine school district. Which is J- JCN, Jefferson County North, um, they had a bond question. Um, yes votes, forty-six, no votes, twenty-nine, and I do not know what their overall is from Jefferson County.
Yeah.
So I don't know what. I think it was very close though.
I think it passed.
Did it?
I believe it passed.
It was very close.
Don't pull me to that, but I believe.
Yes, so, and then we did have a question submitted for the city of Bethlehem, um, imposing a one percent citywide retailers sales tax. Um, yes votes, one thirty-seven, to the no votes is seventy-eight. So, and like I said, these will be put on the website as soon as we get the signatures and get, um. As soon as you guys approve them.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we the undersigned members of the Board of County Commissioners in, and for said county and ex officio board. Of canvassers for said county, do hereby certify that the witness, our hands is twelfth day of, of November twenty twenty-four. To accept the canvas and the final, um, what do you call?
Abstract.
At, the final abstract for uh, the recent uh, election, do I hear a motion? We're here second.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to accept, all in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
I will let you three keep those, I'm, and just, when you sign these two copies. I have two, uh-huh.
Good man in charge. We're not in charge, there's one in hand, it's two.
Oh no.
Hey, we're outnumbered, there's two of them. Always outnumbered, there's one. Hey, that's a good thing.
That's, that's what I have, um, I, I feel the election went very well, we had um, a lot of board workers. Um, didn't have any big problems at all that I was aware of, so.
Do you have any, but it couldn't work that day or?
Um, I did have one person, but she was able to cancel. Couple days in advance.
That was my close.
I've been working at getting additional people, um, I want to try to get those people. That I can just call last minute and say, hey, do you have time? Um, just to kind of pencil us in, just in case we need that extra worker, because it does, it is beneficial with these big elections like this to have extra people, you have. Somebody needing a provisional, you have that one person that can leave with them and not slow down your line, cause some of the lines were, were rather long, but we didn't have it. We didn't have, I think ten minutes is what the longest I heard, so that may not be as accurate, but. Definitely not anything like what's down south, we didn't have any two-hour lo- two-hour waits, so.
You know, I think the poll workers were very happy that, I mean, it was nice to be busy. Uh, steady, and.
Yes, and I did have a handful of brand-new ones, and so, I'm eager to get their feedback on, on that, so. But yes, I think it would.
You have a meeting where you talk about it or just?
We, we typically don't, but I had made a comment that I think we're going to this year.
Thank you again.
Just send out a little invitation to say, you know, come to this location, we'll all meet and just.
Yeah.
Just visit and see how things worked, thank you. So, but yeah, just to kind of see, cause when you're working at one precinct, you don't really know what the other ones are doing. The only time I have that is in odd years when we have city elections, and city, people, people that are on the city. Um, ballots cannot work that precinct, so I do move them around sometimes. You know, that's kind of neat, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
So I am, I am done then, and we'll go ahead and finish what you may need to.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business that we need to attend to?
I think so.
Is there any county counties that's lower updates?
No.
What about the land? City. The acquisition, are we doing that?
Well, I mean, you signed the, that addendum, we're just waiting on O'Keefe Wilson to give us the closing date. I'm a little surprised we don't have it yet, but I ha- I didn't, I didn't ask him about it today. We had some discussion last week, but I didn't ask him about it. Okay.
All right. No need for an executive session of any kind? Go back on the plan, do, if I'm not here and you guys need to move forward on that, I'm fine with that. Okay. Yeah, I mean, cause. Yeah, if it's, if it's here next week, I'll go ahead and. Yeah. We've, we've got your. If you make them sign on back or to do that. Okay. That's, that's important or necessary, we as authors, the chair decide probably, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I'll go. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the expenses presented?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Expenses are approved, due to zero. Uh, any public comment? Nobody. On there. So do I hear a motion to adjourn? Uh, and we will be here till one, but we'll adjourn into uh, workshop.
Yeah, I would move to, uh, adjourn into workshop.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to zero, we are adjourned.